Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Taos County Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Commissioner Romero.
Present.
Commissioner Vehil.
Present.
Commissioner Mascherinias.
Present.
Vice Chair Romero.
Present.
Chair Brush.
Present. Thank you very much. For our inspirational devotion this morning, I'd like to call up our manager Brent Harameo, who is also a village councillor in Cuesta, to start us off on a few thoughts about the weekend's tragedies.
All right. Thank you, Chair Brush. Good morning, commissioners. Also, if school board member Cordova and school board Levato may come forward as well. And Pastor Peter Martinez from Living Ward Ministries will be delivering inspirational devotion this morning. We have four different Cuesta school board members that work in Taos, three of which actually work for the county, two of which weren't able to be here this morning, but I did invite the school board to be in attendance this morning. And with that, Cuesta is at a big loss this morning. It's even hard for me to talk about it, and I know that for the school board members as well. But with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Pastor Peter.
Thank you, Brent.
We do ask that you keep our little community in prayer, because it's not only shaken up one family, it's shaken up two families as well as the whole community. As most of you have seen, there was a vigil, which was very powerful, to see the community come out to give support to the family of Amber. But we need to continue just to keep this whole situation in prayer. And what we would like to see is a shift in the atmosphere so things like this don't happen again. And we want to ask each and every one of you that are here, present today, to keep us all in prayer. Amen. And I'd like to just pray for the meeting today. And in 1 Timothy, Chapter 2, Verse 2, it says that "we ought to pray for all those that are in position of authority." And it's pretty powerful what it says, "so that if we pray for them, we will..." "that we may live a peaceful and quiet life in all godliness, and that we would see the goodness and the favor of God here in our land." So we also want to thank each and every one of you, commissioners, chair, and all of you that serve as leaders here in the county, because it's important that we keep you in prayer as well. Because I know you're just as well as families, and you're shaken, your hearts are moved, just like every one of us. But we're grateful for what you do and how you serve, as well as all of the employees of Taos County. So I'd like to just say a prayer. Father, I thank you that you're a God that knows all things. You know our struggles, and you know our good times. But Father, during this time, I just pray, Father, that, Lord, even during this meeting, that you lead every decision and every discussion that comes forward, that you give wisdom to those, Father, that are making decisions and choices. And I thank you for each one of them, Father. And I pray for their families, and I pray for them, that, Lord, that you bring favor and that you grant them with your blessing. And Father, I thank you for all of those that are employed here at the county as well, that you protect them, their families. And, Lord, just let your blessing be over each and every one of them. And we thank you for today. And, Lord, we also ask just a special blessing over our community of Cuesta. The Father, the Lord, through this situation, that it would come to a crossroads, where we would be led into something that is much better than something that is led by you, Father. We ask, Lord, for your hand over the community and over each of these families. And we thank you, Lord, that we can ask you for your guidance. And it's in your mighty name that we pray. We thank you. Amen and amen.
Pastor Peter, thank you very much for being here and for your words about peace and goodness and a shift toward more of that. Thank you also to our school board members and Brent. Thank you all for your words. We will absolutely keep the community of Cuesta in our hearts, in our thoughts, and in our prayers. Thank you. And now I'd like to invite you all to stand for our pledge of allegiance and the salute to the flag of New Mexico. And Vice Chair Romero, if you could please start us off.
Yo juro felicidad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y la república que representa una nación bajo de Dios indiscible con libertad y justicia para todos. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Commissioner Mascherinias, could you please lead us in the salute to the flag of New Mexico?
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeiss symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you, everybody. This takes us to Agenda Item 6, which is Approval of the Agenda. Commissioners, what are your wishes? Any changes, edits, or a motion to approve as presented? Motion to approve as presented? Thank you, Commissioner Vehil. I'll go ahead and second that one. Val, if you could please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinias.
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Our agenda for this morning is approved. And this takes us to an important part of our agenda, very important, Item 7, which is Awards and Recognizations. And I'd like to ask our county manager Brent Harameo to again come up. Thank you, Brent.
Thank you, Chair Brush. Commissioners, we're going to do something a little bit different before we go through the Years of Service Certificate. Ms. Aaron Beatty and also helped me, Mr. Rodello, Ms. Romero. Those of you that were able to come by on Friday, we had a pretty great event. We had a job fair, we had a DWI event, and then we teamed up with the Taos Auto Cruise Organization, and they brought their cars and their trucks out. And it was an event that we all pulled together. There was great teamwork between the Human Resource Department, DWI, and the Administration Office to pull off this event. And there was hamburgers and hot dogs. John Vaughn over here was cooking away and doing everything. Norma was running around, Darlene, everybody was... Ms. Alice. And I'm not going to mention names, because I'm going to forget somebody, but also want to thank everybody. And then we'll turn it over to Anisa.
Good morning, Ms. Aaron Beatty.
Good morning, Commissioner. So what you see in front of you is the donations that we got from the TACO, which is the Taos Auto Cruise Organization. Everybody that had a car brought a bag of school supplies. Also, we had donations. My Commissioner Vehil brought us money, so we went and bought more. So what you see in front of you is everything that we got for that. That will be distributed around the county to pretty much the elementaries, because the way we were looking at it, it's a lot of crayons and, you know, the younger kid age. We did also have, for the job fair, HR couldn't be here right now, because they're doing some interviews, but HR did their job fair. Brandy came after having her baby. Like last week, she even came. We had... So a good response on that. We had donations from Coca-Cola. They gave us money, and we got a bunch of drinks. They also helped. We let them put a little sign up for their kind of a job fair thing. We had the courts, the DA's office. So it was on that side, that was our side. On the other side, there was the DWI awareness. They also had the carts out there, so you could drive through the, what was it, like obstacle course, which I didn't get to do. But we had tons of food. We had our sheriff's department and the Taos PD there. For the most part, it was for the first-time event, and he put it together. My other, right now, who doesn't ever talk? That's why God volunteered to talk. She put together most of this. She did a lot of work. Her, Johnny, even though Johnny was sick and wasn't there, Norma did a good job filling in for him. And then our facilities guys. They lugged ice out there. They lugged barricades out there. They stayed afterwards, Isaiah and Rick, and they helped us like you have no idea. So for the small staff that we are, we did a lot for doing a one-day event. We were very tired, but very, very happy in the outcome. And we're going to do it next year again. But is there anything else?
Yeah. We're going to be sending out an email to the employees today if they still want to donate school supplies. Did you figure out a cutoff date? Or that's it? Wednesday of next week will be the cutoff dates we're going to be asking employees to still bring supplies in. I know Renell started outreach into the schools last week. And like I said, it was a team effort, but I also want to bring up Johnny Rodella for a moment. He was sick on Thursday and Friday, and I'm sure it broke him up not to be here. And I don't know if John Vaughn or Norma would answer this question. How many times did Johnny call you guys? And...
What did I think? One, two, three, four.
I'm sure that they're saying, "Ah, Johnny again." No, just joking. And we'd also like to thank Gilda, and this is one of our new additions, Santino, as well. And Johnny, come on up.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Madam Chair, Council.
Good morning.
I just got a couple of words. Yeah, I wanted to bring the community together and do something for all of us, not just DWI. And by having the awareness, I went upstairs to ask if we can do something in the parking lot for alcohol awareness and found out that HR and administration wanted to go together to do this. We only had about three and a half weeks to get this done. I'm hearing that we had a guesstimation of over 500 people who attended. And I just want to say real quick, some of the people to give thanks to. Rocky Mountain Youth Corps was there, Pinwheel Healing Center, Rio Grande ATP, Recovery Friendly Taos, Compostela Community Family Cultural Institute, El Central Family Health, New Mexico Wellness of Taos, who's going to be here talking later, Eighth Judicial District Attorney's Office, Community Against Violence, Piñasco Spot, Las Cumbres Community Services, Foster Grandparent and Senior Companion Program, Las Cumbres, Human Resources Department from Taos County, Workforce Solutions, Eighth Judicial District Courts, Law Enforcement, the Town of Taos and Taos County Sheriff's were wonderful to bring their vehicles, so the kids can see that as well. I'm sure Cuesta really wanted to be there in the state, but due to the situation that happened, they were not able to attend. Renell and Anisa and all the help they gave us with the flyers and output and everything as well. The donations strongly for all the food, all the popcorn, everything that was free was given, and some of the other things, were given by Taos Pro Speed and Loop, Pinwheel Healing Center, Rio Grande, New Mexico Wellness and Taos Storyteller Cinema 7 gave us all the popcorn we needed, Golden Willow, Sabor Real Restaurante, Martin Michael's Kitchen, Albertson's, Walmart, Smith's, Super Save. All of them were great on giving us stuff, and Super Save let us use their parking lot as well. Taos Mountain Casino and Michael's Kitchen. And I wanted to say a special thanks to everybody that was involved in there. And it was... Oh, and the DJ, Mr. Vicente, Mr. Chichero, did a great job here as well. And like I said, I wanted to be here so bad, I almost put a mask on, a scarf and everything, just to come out and see. It was a lot of work, and I want to say thank you to everybody involved between HR and administration and my staff who stepped up when I couldn't be there. So thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone.
So thank you so much, Mr. Rodella. It was a true community event. It was fantastic. So I can't wait until next year's...
Excuse me, Madam Chair and Commission. I also spoke to the State of Santa Fe. I've got a good friend that works out there, and next year they want to be a part of this. And they want to bring us helmets for the children and car seats for the children.
That's wonderful.
So they want to be a part of this next year.
Thank you so much. That's exciting. That was a true indicator of the success of it. So I want to thank you and your team, administration, Anisa, Renell, facilities, HR, everybody from the Taos County team who helped put this together in short order. And with respect to the cars, I thought it was Take One Home Day, so I'm waiting for the keys to my Mustang. Anytime. Commissioner Vehil, you have to...
I just want to know who won. The car showed... Anisa, do you have? Who's... Oh. Very good. Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
It was a great event.
It was a fantastic event. And the snow cones were also delicious and needed that day. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody, who was a big part of that. Appreciate it a lot. Brent, do you want to take us on to our Years of Service Certificates for July? Also, an incredibly important part of our agenda this morning.
Thank you for indulging us with that moment. Before I call up these individuals, I also want to acknowledge some other individuals in the month of July that are celebrating an anniversary. At the Detention Center, we have Morgan Thomas, who's been here one year, Melanie Torres, one year, Estrella Madrid, one year, Raven Sandoval, Gurale, with our Sheriff's Office. And then we have Nicole Gonzalez at our Fire EMS Department with six years, Juan Sintas with seven, Tomas Medina with eight, Don Romero with nine, Meli Rodriguez with nine. She's from our senior programs. Shona Modis Bond, also for senior programs, nine years. Anna Gurale, nine years, senior program. Rosie Sisneros, nine years, senior program. And then we have Philip Ortega from the Sheriff's Office, 11 years. Juan Lopez, 12 years. Richard Sanchez, our project manager, 14 years. Jennifer, also known as Jen Maestas, from the Treasurer's Office, 18 years. We have Luella Roberts, 22 years, from Solid Waste, and Adine Gomez, 22 years. With that, I'd also like to call up Darlene Trujillo, who is celebrating 25 years with Taos County. And Darlene has probably been to every school district in the county. She doesn't know... She probably can't even tell us how many times she's been there, but she's a vital component, going out to the school districts and working with the school. Thank you, Darlene, for your 25 years of service. Sheriff Mieta's here, but Sheriff Mieta is celebrating 20 years with the county. Veronica Lopez Gonzalez, she works in the Assessor's Office. She's not able to be here today, but she did... Well, she did let us know that she was not able to be here today. Next, I would like to acknowledge and call up Rachel Romero, Taos County Planning Director. You guys have heard me on this before. Well, Rachel's been an employee of Taos County. She also pursued her college degree in planning while being an employee. And so Rachel is very thorough and likes to... brings a sense of enthusiasm to the department as well. So I'd like to present Rachel with this certificate for 10 years of service to Taos County. Thank you, Rachel. I don't think Rita's here. Rita has been with us for five years. She is our Animal Control Officer, as well as a certified deputy for the Taos County Sheriff's Office. Our next certificate of service for five years of service is presented to Ralph Arriano. Ralph has had various positions here with us at Taos County, so he's kind of well-rounded right now. He works as our Solid Waste Attendant in Pilad. So I'd like to thank you, Ralph, for your five years of service to the county. Ralph always brings some enthusiasm to the job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brent, and a huge thank you to everyone whose names have been called this morning, because it's you all that get the work done for the residents of Taos County. So we owe you a big debt of gratitude. You're the ones who do the work. So we appreciate your loyalty and your dedication and your years of service very, very much. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our Agenda Item Number 8, which is Public Comment. Anyone who would like to talk about a concern, a question, a point of information, has three minutes to talk to us. We'll first let those in the room approach the podium. If you would, when you approach, please state your name and your location or your organization, or both. And after we hear from those in the room, we will open up the phone lines. So if you're watching online, note this number, 575-737-6310. Again, that's 737-6310. We'll open up the phone lines once folks in the room are finished speaking. And a friendly reminder, we cannot engage in conversation with you, as frustrating as that might be. That is state law, that unless your topic is published on our agenda 72 hours in advance, we can't have a conversation about it, because all of your friends and neighbors and family probably would have wanted to be here and hear about it, too. So is there anyone in the room who would like to make a comment? I see Rocky Mountain Youth Corps in the room. And the next generation of Youth Corps as well.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I was graciously attending the event on Friday with you guys. Thank you very much for the invite from us. Sorry, my name is Candice Abasa, Rocky Mountain Youth Corps Prevention Program. And then also at the Nonprofit Fest on Saturday as well. So that was really nice. I'm so glad to see so many community organizations coming together. It's really great. I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time this morning to let you guys know that we are hiring for high school mentors. This year, we have four schools that we're involved with, and we're hoping to get all the contracts back very soon. So our schools this year are Taos High School, Taos Pueblo Day School, Cuesta, and Piñasco. So so far, only one out of four has gotten all the contracts in, but it's in the works. Last year, we had two schools, so we're slowly making progress. So if you guys know anybody that's 18 years or older that's looking to give back and be a mentor to our high school students, I brought some flyers. I can leave them with this gentleman here. Thank you. Yeah, and that's about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Good information. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to make a comment? Mr. Thilke, please come on up. That is one very well-behaved Youth Corps member. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Neil Thilke from Yanos San Juan. And I got a little bit of humor. I did a protest, an assessment protest, back when Commissioner Vehil was in charge of the Assessor's Office. And I had a stack of filings about this thick. Somebody was assigned to hear the case. I was thinking that I was going to be in front of a judge, but somebody was assigned to hear the case, and her ruling was final. But this is the humor of it all. Her ruling stated that "I failed to overcome the assumption of correctness." Write that one down, because you won't hear that one too much. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thilke. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to speak this morning? Okay, then I'm going to turn the phone off of Do Not Disturb. If you're watching us online and you'd like to talk for three minutes to us, 575-737-6310. We'll give it a minute or two for folks to call in, 575-737-6310. And while we wait for the phone to ring, we'll just offer a friendly reminder to donate school supplies. It's quite the array that was collected. And it shouldn't have to be the teachers buying them, right? Okay, one last time, 575-737-6310. Next time, 30-second history lesson, okay?
Fourth time period, do the history tell us?
Yep. Let's line it up for next time, while we wait for the phone to ring. Okay, then we're going to turn the phone back off and move on to Agenda Item 9, which is our presentations. And this morning, starting with 9:00 A.M., we have an introduction and presentation by Will Drumco-Wright, Agricultural 4-H Agent for the Cooperative Extension Service here in Taos County. Good morning, Will.
Good morning.
Thanks for being with us.
Thank you. Buenos dias, comisionados, administradores, mi discenos, y gracias a ustedes por invitarme. I'm Will Drumco-Wright. I'm the County Agricultural Extension Agent for Cooperative Extension Service here in Taos County, and technically an employee of Taos County as well. So thank you very much. I wanted to introduce myself a little bit, what I hope to do with this program. It's a really wonderful program. Many of you have experience with it. I also introduced a little bit about myself, so people kind of know where I'm coming at in this community. So I'm relatively new to Taos County. I moved here last fall. I lived in Las Vegas and Wagon Mount for 16 years. So I don't like to move very often, so I plan on serving this community for a very, very long time. I am new to this position and Extension Service, but I'm not really new to this line of work. I got a Bachelor's of Science degree in forestry from Highlands and a natural resource management degree from Highlands. My research involved rangeland ecology and kind of working ranchland landscapes out on the Contras Plain east of Las Vegas. And I was lucky enough to have a wide variety of work experiences while I was in school, immediately after school. I've worked for about every kind of agency that you can work for for a service, the New Mexico Forest and Watershed Restoration Institute, State Forestry, Park Service, Fish and Wildlife, basically all of them, over the course of many years as a student. And I was really lucky enough to find a really good job in Las Vegas after a couple of years away. I started teaching at Luna Community College. I spent one year at Luna, and I spent eight years at Highlands, teaching in the Biology and Natural Resource Management Departments at Highlands. I said my farewells to them in the spring. This job came up, and I just really am very grateful and thankful to have this position and be a member of this community. So I'm excited about this new chapter of my professional life with Taos County Cooperative Extension, serving the needs of our community. As a representative of both NMSU and a department of Taos County, I think Extension has a really unique role to play in providing practical, research-based knowledge and programs that improve New Mexicans' quality of life. I truly believe agriculture runs at the heart of our communities here in the North. It's why the pueblo is here. It's why our villages is here. It's how people made their living for hundreds of years, and I really hope to support that. So our office, I'm really proud of the staff I have, of Monica Gonzalez Wilder and Sue Ann Rosales Vehil. They're just really jamming right now in full support of the county fair that's coming up. That's August 24th and 27th. Big shout out there. They're also working really hard in support of our four... They're also working really hard in support of our 4H youth and families. They have their projects going. They're going to be showing there at the county fair. And I've been fortunate enough to see what that hard work looks like at some of our 4H clinics. And these are where families are hauling animals from Cuesta, Acostia and beyond to come to the clinic. They work with some of these adult volunteers. It's really an amazing collaboration of volunteerism and service. We had a really successful youth livestock school this past summer. I was able to attend that just before I started, so I was off the clock. That was really nice. But we hosted that at the Ag Center Arena. That was really successful. There's a lot of Tausenyo youth and youth from surrounding counties that were able to get a lot of pointers and help in their stockmanship and showmanship skills. So these are really great programs. I really look forward to continuing to support. I'm personally really excited about these existing 4H programs we have as well as room to expand. There's a lot in the 4H programs that we can offer in our schools and with our youth. They range into wildlife work, the trades, there's welding, STEM focused type of work. So there's a lot in there that youth can really get a lot out of. And I'm literally looking forward to working with Monica and achieving that. As the county director, I was I'm also in the process of putting together my extension advisory committee. Many of you are probably aware, our office is kind of run with a extension advisory committee that helps sort of give us direction on what kind of programs we might we we should do to best serve our communities. We also put together a five-year type of plans called a Plan of Work. My mandate is to have that done by December. So I can give an update on that in December and January, end of the new year. I'm also drafting, currently drafting programming for workshops for the coming year, reaching out to a lot of leaders in our various agricultural sectors, people from the cattle world, sheep and goat world, market gardeners, home gardeners, to see what kind of programs are going to really be useful to both our seasoned producers and new producers. So yeah. I was also really excited to hear about some of the timelines for completing the kitchen and classroom facilities at the Ag Center. I know that's a big work in progress. I've been down there. I've done a lot of remodel and home construction, so there's a long way to go. But I was really, yeah, found a lot of good to hear that that's on the county's agenda and one of their priorities. Really, I can really vision it. When I was walking down there to have a classroom, a kitchen, right next to pins and an arena, that opens up a whole new world of possibilities for doing workshops and types of programs. So really looking forward to seeing that progress. We've also been working with the Taus Collaborative Weed Management Area and Tanya Duncan over there at Taus Soil and Water. We do have our next collaborative weed management area meeting tomorrow at 1:00. You can reach out to myself or Tanya about that meeting. It's on Zoom. So noxious weeds are a big concern of mine. That wasn't really a big issue in Las Vegas. We didn't have a whole lot of irrigation. Weeds really like irrigation and we are blessed with an abundance of water here in Taus County. And that also means noxious weed issues. So looking forward to working with them in a sort of advisory and technical assistance role. I have been gotten some really good early mentorship from former agent Tony Valdez, who was really instrumental in putting that work group together. And really fortunate to have both of our former extension agents living here in Taus County. I've got them on speed dial and they have graciously have said that they will answer my calls when I need help troubleshooting things. So really thank you to Ray and Tony for that. Looking forward to working with you all in Mr. Harmio's office to provide whatever updates you'd like from our office, what we've got going on and any input. So happy to assist the county and you all as possible. And I can take any questions if that's how this works. I'm not really sure.
That is exactly how this works. Thank you so much for being here and for being our our extension agent. We are thrilled to have you onboard. Commissioners, any comments or questions for our new extension agent?
Just a chair, Commissioner Vehil. Oh, no, I just want to welcome Will. We're very excited to have you onboard. And I also want to thank you for all the exciting things that you're talking about and just becoming more aware of what the community wants and needs. And so that's that's really appreciated. I really appreciate that approach. But I also want to thank Monica because she really has, you know, kind of filled that that spot for a little bit there, just holding the fort and Sue Ann. So, you know, hats off to them. But you're right, you have an excellent team, so.
Absolutely. And it's been a really seamless transition, like really has felt very smooth in this first month. And so, yeah.
Really good. And as far as kitchen, I'm glad you went and assessed it, but I have a push date for October 14th. So I'm gonna look at Brent. But nonetheless, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mascherini?
I had the opportunity to sit down with Will and your significant other for the training that happened. So we had a nice little visit. So again, welcome. I got to know him a little bit then. We are working at other improvements in that area, so you guys will see other stuff coming as well. But if you need anything from us, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, commissioners? No? Then Will, I'll ask you one question, which is, could you just please repeat the dates of the Taus County Fair so we all make sure?
Yes, that is August 24th through the 27th.
Awesome. Thank you. Everyone have that on their calendars? August 24th through the 27th?
And rodeo coming up August 14th through the 15th.
Rodeo, 12th through 13th?
12th through 13th. 12th and 13th.
The signs around town really.
The signs around town, they're well signed.
So the rodeo 12th and the 13th, the fair the 24th through the 27th. There's a lot going on in August.
There is.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're super happy to hear that you don't move very often, so.
I don't. I don't like to move.
It's not fun. Thank you for being here. I want to go thank you too. All right, this takes us on to. Oh, please. Come on up to the microphone, please, Monica. Thank you.
The Taus County Fair Board and Taus County Cooperative Extension Service, along with the 4H, is very proud. This year will be the first year and hopefully the annual to come. The Quilt of Valor presentation for our veterans will be presented on Saturday at 12:00 and we ask all of you to please represent. The Taus Quilt and Fiber Guild will be doing the presentation. But last year after the county fair, we brainstormed and they are onboard and they are excited to do it along with the proclamation, both the joint proclamation through the town and the county on Senior Citizen Day on Saturday. So that will be at 12:00 to 12:15. Then the Quilt of Valor presentation from 12:15 to 1:00, followed by the entertainment. So we're happy, excited and honored that they wanted to do it with the county fair.
Thank you, Monica. Thank you for that update and for all the work that is going into this event behind the scenes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to our next presentation, I'd just like to rewind a moment, backtrack a bit and go back to our awards and recognitions section of the agenda. Mr. Harmio.
She sneak out on us. I saw her looking. Okay, and I'm also sorry, looking at the agenda out of the corner of my eye.
It's an indication of how hard our team works that they can sometimes be here and sometimes can't, you know, have to step out. So we appreciate that the work comes first. Appreciate that a lot. Good morning.
Good morning again, commissioners. This is Rita Carthanas. She works in a sheriff's office under the Animal Control Division. As you are aware, she recently became a certified deputy and she's been with Taus County for five years. And in the animal control community, they know they could call on Rita for assistance. And she's gotten that good reputation out there in the animal community that call on Rita. And I mean, you could call on any of our staff, but they Rita also has a good reputation out there in the community. So we have for you Rita, years of service certificate and recognition of five years of service to Taus County, presented to Rita Carter than us, July 2018 to July 2023. Thank you, Rita, for everything you do for Taus County.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Try to do my best.
Thank you so much, Rita, for your dedication, your years of service. And I'll personally thank you. My my own beast at home, he was brought in by animal control and I'm very grateful for the work that you do. He made his way out of the back of your truck into my bedroom. So thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Okay, then let's keep moving on to our, we'll go back to our presentations item on the agenda. Item nine, 9B is introduction and presentation by New Mexico Wellness regarding local treatment facility and services.
I'm going to kick it off. Just a little bit of context for the for the our newer commissioners, we can't, I don't know if we can still call you new, but Taus County had been approached by an employee of our Central Economic Development District about possibly buying the Days Inn and using that as a treatment center. The commission last year weighed out those options and then we, that did not happen. Another company called Doing Good Enterprises purchased the Days Inn and they're going to be up. There's been a buyout with New Mexico Wellness of Doing Good Enterprises and Mr. Barros could speak more to that about it. But just trying to also provide a little bit of context is that we did partner with what's now New Mexico Wellness on a community development block grant for economic development. That was awarded last year and that's going to be for kitchen improvements and also a meeting room space. We had a lot of presentations with the county commission. Under the Economic Development Grant, you can partner with a private entity and it has been done in the community with the town of Taus and the Don Fernando Hotel. And now this project here with what's formerly known as the Days Inn. Now it's New Mexico Wellness. With that said, I'm going to turn over the rest of the presentation to Mr. Ambrose Barros, Vice President, and Josh Baca, Executive Director of New Mexico Wellness.
Thank you, Brent. And good morning and thank you for being here, Mr. Barros and Mr. Baca. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. County Manager. Madam Chair, committee members, my name is Ambrose Barros. And I'm here to, you know, present a little bit or answer any questions on New Mexico Wellness and the services we provide. To my right is Mr. Joshua Baca, our Executive Director, who oversees the day-to-day operations. New Mexico Wellness is a behavioral health agency providing services to individuals struggling with substance use disorders and mental health. We provide an array of specialized services that include medical detox, which is ASAM Level 3.7, high intensity clinical residential services, which is your ASAM Level 3.5, and transitional living, which is your ASAM Level 3.1. Just to provide some clarity, ASAM is the American Society of Addiction Medicine and it provides criteria for proper placement for individuals struggling with substance use disorder. In addition, our program offers a continuum of care that includes specialized services such as intensive outpatient, comprehensive community support services or intensive case management and individual and family therapies. New Mexico Wellness was founded and started in Rio Rancho in 2021. It's been a process to open adult, an accredited adult residential treatment center in the state. That was right when COVID hit and so it really impacted the the parameters around CMS and New Mexico Medicaid role for the development of these services. I was lucky enough to help write the New Mexico Medicaid rule to extend or expand Medicaid into providing payment for these services. A large part of our population, our individuals struggling in poverty and an engine and they're on Medicaid. And if you don't take Medicaid, you're not very effective in providing that service. New Mexico Wellness opened in Taus in on in June, June 1st, to be exact. Now, just to provide some context, in order to provide residential treatment services to adults in the state under the Medicaid role, you must first operate for a period of six months to one year so you could apply for accreditation. Accreditation is provided through three entities. The first is CARF. And I apologize, I'm not going to murder the acronym of CARF, but they basically oversee their commissions of accreditation for rehabilitation facilities. So primarily behavioral health facilities. And that accreditation basically states, when you pass it and you get it, that you operate your your program at standards of care that limit your risk and liability. So you're providing high standards of care for individuals. You prove that through your policies and procedures and in your process. You have to actually implement the program in order to apply for that accreditation. The next is JCO, the Joint Commission of Accreditation. That's what we have. We have JCO accreditation. It really oversees hospitals, but it does umbrella behavioral health hospitals, which is what residential is considered under JCO. And then CODA. So June 2nd, we open. A large part of the residential programs that we're offering are absorbed by the operation itself. You know, the investors while we go for the accreditation here in Taus. We've extended our JCO accreditation to the Taus facility effective July 10th. They allowed us to shorten that six months to a year period because we're already established in Rio Rancho under JCO. And so this is an extension site of our services. And basically, the parameters for the accreditation is 30 days to 90 days. So we passed the 30-day mark. We got their accreditation. Now our application is in the process of BHSD for the accredited adult residential treatment designation. Okay, I wanted to provide some context because I know there's been articles. And when you talk to a reporter for 45 minutes and you don't understand the context of what it takes to get to this area, that's all I'm here trying to do is to provide some some clarity. I would like to take any questions because I feel that's going to be most effective because I could talk for a very long time on behavioral health. I've been doing this for 23 years and I've been blessed to do it in an intensive outpatient setting and in a residential setting for both adolescents, children, adolescents and adults.
Thank you, Mr. Barros. Appreciate the background and the context and the updates. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Barros and Mr. Baca?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner Vehil.
Welcome and thank you. Your services are definitely welcomed here in Taus and we've been waiting for quite some time to get started here. So thank you for what you're doing. My questions are in regards to how many can you house? Individuals can you house? And that's my first question.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Council. So currently we have the capacity for 67.
67.
Yeah.
So does that mean that the entire place is ready to go? It's been remodeled. You've got everything that you need and, okay. And how many, can you answer this? How many are currently in there?
Yeah, absolutely. Currently, we have 30.
30, okay. So the other question would be, I'm sorry, I have all these questions.
No worries.
So there's always been a concern that a facility as such might not be so accommodating to to people that live in the community. So we, you know, we're always concerned that we first and foremost provide for our very own. And so wondering if that is your, also your, your thoughts?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm prioritizing the Tausenios, absolutely. I've been really working closely with Mr. Roudalo here. I came to the event, working well with Zachariah, trying to really attend to Taus before anybody. That's my priority. And so absolutely, I'm making that the most precedent moment at the time.
Okay, and I think the last question that comes to mind for now is behavioral, I'm sorry, the mental illness in Taus. There's, we've had such a difficulty in, you know, helping these individuals. So for example, a lot of these individuals are taken into Holy Cross Hospital and they don't have the mechanism which to to help them in the way that they need help. Wondering, do you know, and you may know the answer to this, is there already a process in place so that if individuals are taken into Holy Cross Hospital, are they able to to be referred or, you know, or how does that work? How is that process taking place?
So that's something I'm actually in the duration of trying to get in with them to create either an MOU or some sort of contract where we can take them from there. That way they have their beds available to handle their acuity. And that way we can bring them in and bring them into our detox.
Great, great. So those are the only questions I have right now, Chair. And thank you very much. Once again, we're very appreciative. And you are right, I know there's quite the process to get to that accreditation. And so I'm glad that you've laid that out because often people aren't aware. And in order for us to provide the best service, the most professional service, those accreditations are super important. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehil. Commissioners, any any further questions for Mr. Barros or Mr. Baca? Then I will just repeat, Commissioner Vehil is welcome. You are going to provide an important or are providing an important piece of our recovery puzzle that is so much needed in our community. So thank you so much for your work. Mr. Harmio.
Thank you, Chair Brush. You said it right there at the end and that's why I stood up. Because it, New Mexico Wellness is just a piece of the puzzle. They're not here competing with any other local nonprofit. They're here for a separate mission from what's been put out there in the community. I just want to be clear that they're not in competition with any other nonprofit. They're here to provide a treatment, services. They're here to provide a treatment, services for individuals. And that could be from 90 to 180 days. So this is not a, a competition with anybody else. They're providing their own unique services.
Thank you, Brent. I'm glad you expanded on, on that comment about this is a piece of, like, we need the full spectrum of recovery services, right? From the immediate, like, right now, today and tomorrow, to the longer term, the medium term, we need the whole spectrum and we haven't had that. So we are with, with our local, our local profit, our nonprofits and providers and with you all, and hopefully also in partnership with Holy Cross, we're putting that, that journey together, right? So that we can take care of our community members who need help. So thank you for, for picking up on that.
And Chair, if I may add.
Sure, Commissioner Vehil.
As we get, kind of kick off that detox that we've been working on, certainly that's the other part to this puzzle. And we all know there's plenty of work for all. So we, I, I love the fact that we did, that you, Brent stated that it's not a competition. It is, you know, piece of the puzzle, collaboration. And once again, I'm sure you'll work with, with that group as well.
Thank you. Yeah, exactly. It's not a competition, it's collaboration and compassion. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I think that then that moves us on to our agenda item 10, which is a public hearing. And this is 10A. It's discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of a beer and wine license application with on-premise consumption for Alvarados LLC doing business as Toribios located at 1630 Paseo del Pueblo Norte in El Prado. And we have Ms. Nicole Alvarado here.
Yes.
And Brent, you can help also kick us, kick us off. And I will try not to think about the menu and get hungry right now.
Yes. As required under state statutes, we need to hold a public hearing. Nicole submitted an application to the Alcohol and Gaming Division of the State of New Mexico for a beer and wine license. Procedurally, this has to come before our governing body for approval. So if you would like to open up the public hearing, Ms. Alvarado can speak to what they're going to do and then you could take comments for or against beer and wine license.
Okay. Thank you, Brent. And let's open up the public hearing at 9:53 a.m. today, August 1st. Ms. Alvarado, thank you for being here.
And tell them even a little bit about the beer and wine license.
So we're gonna do a soft beer and wine license. It's just gonna be alcohol and like wine, I mean, like beers and wine. And then, yeah. I don't know really what to say.
That, that is fine. We also have the application here in front of us. So we've seen, we've had a chance to review your application and all of your information. So I guess at this point, then we take some comments in, public comments in this public hearing in support of your application for a beer and wine license. If there's anyone in the room who would like to speak, you can come forward. Or if you are watching online, you can call 575-737-6310. And again, right now, we're taking comments in support of your application. So 575-737-6310. But first, we have someone in the room who would like to speak. If you could just identify yourself with your name and the area where you live.
My name is Michelle Montoya Cozal. I live in El Prado. I actually grew up on the property where Toribios is located. And I represent my parents, who are both in their basically 90s. And so I'm, I'm the person who's a spokesman for them. I just want to basically speak in support of this. In the last, what, two years you guys have been running Toribios? The last couple of years, I've worked with Alvarados to change over from the previous owner. And I will say, the restaurant has been cleaned up greatly. They are more conscientious to make sure that it is not a place where people are just hanging out, sleeping there at night. And it's just become a cleaner, family-run place. They encourage it to be more of a family place. They are very good about coming over and speaking with my parents about any changes or any concerns. They're also very cautious to watch out because my parents do live on the same property to make sure that they are protected and that people from the restaurant are not intruding on my parents. They are very wonderful about coming over and discussing issues such as this and assuring them that, you know, they will be, it'll be a very cautious thing. Obviously, you know, alcohol will only be served with food and a limited amount and really being cautious to reinforce any of this. My parents have no problems with it. And so I just want to say in support of my parents that they are in full approval and support of this change with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciated. Is there anybody else in the room or watching online who would like to make a comment in support of the application? One more time, the phone number is 575-737-6310 if you'd like to call and leave a comment. Anybody else in the room? Okay. And then at this point, we'll, we'll listen to any comments against the application. If there's anybody in the room or watching online who would like to make a comment against the application's approval, the number, one more time, 575-737-6310. And since I don't see anyone in the room, we'll just give it a minute in case anyone wants to call in. Okay. I don't think we have any further comments. We've just had the one comment in support. And Brent and Randy, you can help me. Do we take our questions and comments while the public hearing is still open and then close it? Okay. Commissioners, any comments or questions about the beer and liquor line, or beer and wine application for Toribios? No questions? Okay. Then I think we can close the public hearing. Oh, Commissioner Vehil, absolutely. What are your hours of business?
So during the summer, it's from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Monday to Friday, Saturday and Sunday, it's 7:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. And then during the winter, it's 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. And on Saturday and Sunday, it's 7:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m.
And thank you. I, I see it's on the application, but that's good for the public to know.
Yeah, it's just, it changes during the winter and during the summer.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you. And appreciate your, your hours as someone who drives by on the way home all the time with your, your hours are very convenient. So appreciate that. Good question. Any other questions for Ms. Alvarado? Okay. Then we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 9:58. And at this point, I would entertain a motion, a motion regarding the approval of a beer and wine license application with on-premises consumption for Alvarados LLC DBA Toribios located at 1630 Paseo del Pueblo Norte in El Prado.
Move to accept.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascheranes. And thank you, Vice Chair, for the second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote to approve the application?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascheranes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. Congratulations. Your, your application is approved by the Taos County Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. This moves us on to Agenda Item 11, Department Matters. We're going to start off this morning with Item 11A, Discussion Regarding the 2025 Through 2029 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, also known as our ICIP. Ms. Montoya, good morning, Lori. It's good to see you here.
Good morning, everyone. Before you is Taos County Suggested 2025-2029 ICIP list, which details our priorities as discussed with staff and our managers. As a reminder, the list highlights current ongoing projects needing further funding in addition to other infrastructure needs. As a side note, DFA strongly advises that our ICIP list contains shovel-ready projects and, which will more specifically be selected and funded for upcoming capital outlay requests. And next meeting, I'll be coming forward for the final approval of the list as well as a resolution approved by UOL. And this ICIP list is due to the state Friday, August 18th. Are there any questions on the prioritization of the list as how we presented?
Thank you, Ms. Lori. Appreciate this and appreciate the reminder that we'll be voting on this on our August 15th meeting so that you can turn it in by the 18th. Commissioners, any questions?
Now, if there's any questions or edits or concerns.
I just have a question. So the, the list, the way it's laid out, and it looks good right off the top. We'll certainly, you know, kind of look at it in, in detail. But I guess the question is more for Brent. Is this the, the priority, the way it's listed? Is it, well, the little thing that we did the other day in regards to priorities, was that taken into consideration when this was put together?
Thank you, Commissioner Vehil. That was, that was also my question is like, we did that prioritization exercise.
Thank you.
That our managers, our deputy managers, and especially Ms. Anissa, Ms. Aranbeedi, put a lot of work into getting us wrangled together and spending an afternoon, right? Discussing our priorities. So I was thinking the same thing. It's like, how does this line up?
Because we never saw each other's, you know, answers. And so just wondering how that panned out.
No, we haven't had an opportunity to schedule another retreat to go over the results. Somewhat lines up, the retreat priority was Veterans Cemetery, revised subdivision ordinance, revisions to the land use regulations, Ag Center renovations, short-term rental ordinance, historic county courthouse renovations phase two. And that's number one on the ICIP. Request for ownership of the National Guard Armory, Blueberry Hill Road, which is number two in the ICIP. There are requests for proposal for Calf Canyon, Hermits Peak, Tom Holder Road, which is number three on the list. Revisions to the personnel policy, renovation Sir Royal Honda Community Center, Nascar Community Center additions, draft sustainability plan, revisions to TOPA, create cemetery department, Santa Barbara Road, Aguascalente Bridge, which is for number four on the list of the ICIP. And, and then revision to the land use regulations regarding cannabis. Then we went Ventetta Road, and then develop a recycling department, and then draft fleet conversion policy. And so doesn't quite match up, but it does have some of the same priorities.
It's definitely interesting to hear because not everything on the, our prioritization list is necessarily eligible to be on the ICIP. So it's good to match it up. Thank you for that question and thank you for the info.
So over the years too, we've also had the practice of soliciting requests from our department heads and countywide elected officials. Thus, last week, you know, Lori followed up with the sheriff, followed up with Chief Cordova and anything they would like to see on there.
Thank you. Commissioners, further, further questions or comments for Ms. Montoya? Questions, comments? Other than to say thank you very much for all the work you do. Once again, I think people don't realize how much goes into, you know.
Especially ICIP.
Yes.
Because each individual project has about 80 questions. And so it looks simple, but it's not that simple.
And meanwhile, you're administering, administering all of the other grants that we've been getting every year before this. So thank you very much for your work and for putting this together. We'll, we'll see you next meeting. All right. Moving along to Item 11B under Department Matters, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding an Increase to Purchase Order 46437, which is the new San Cristobal Fire Pumper Tender. The price increase was due to supplies that need to be on the truck per NFPA standards. And our, our fire chief is not here to address any questions, but he did explain before our meeting started that this was, that this purchase order, this change request is simply due to the increase in the cost of the equipment. So do we have any questions? And if so, maybe Mr. Harmio can, he might be able to answer any questions about this. No questions? Okay. Then we can entertain a motion regarding an increase to PO 46437, the new San Cristobal Fire Pumper and Tender. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. And Miguel has seconded. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascheranes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. Okay. That is unanimous approval of PO 46437. Thank you. 11C is next, which is Review, Approve, and/or Adjust Funding Recommendations from the Taos County Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. And with us to discuss this with us this morning is Ms. Jessica Stern, our Economic Development Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Nice to see you. I'm here to present eight funding recommendations from the Taos County Lodger's Tax Advisory Board that were reviewed last Tuesday. There are a couple of comments that I wanted to make just for your information, some background. The first funding request on this list from Dali Productions is actually a new startup business. I know last time we were asking whether or not there would be new applicants. And so this is an interesting one in that they are the new renters and new LLC that is working to bring the Solar Center back online. They came to us to request startup promotional cost as well as some additional initial investments in their first year of promotion. So that was that recommendation. And then at the bottom of the list, the Taos Mountain Balloon Rally, you'll see a difference between the amount requested and that the amount recommended is actually more. The reason for that is that on the application, we ask for the total event budget, the total promotional budget, and then the amount that they're requesting. The amount that they were requesting was $2,500. The board, the advisory board felt that this was a very important event for our community. And then especially in its 40th anniversary year, they wanted to recommend funding the entire budget of their promotional cost. So that, that is a, a vote of assurance, I think, from our advisory board. So that, those are, that's some of the background commentary that I wanted to provide for you.
Thank you, Jessica. I appreciate the comments. And just one comment about the Solar Center out at K-Town. The nonprofit festival happened on Saturday and it was so heartwarming and exciting and invigorating to see life there again, inside and outside. It's like, that's a fantastic space with amazing views, amazing facility. So it's really exciting to think that, that will be coming back to life and back online.
Yes.
Commissioners, any comments or questions about this information from Jessica?
No, not in regards to this information. It's, thank you, Jessica. Great work. I also, and great work from the, the committee. But can you just talk briefly? I, I know a little bit now because I've asked the question about the process, but I think it's important for, for individuals that are applying and receiving that, and I know you give them the, the scoop on what's going to happen next, but can you tell the commission how this works once it's approved?
Sure, sure. Thank you for the question. So after today pending your vote, I will go back and create a requisition form for every applicant that has been approved. With that requisition form, we'll attach the agenda from this meeting, the minutes once we get them. So there's a little bit of a time delay based on the needs of our, the time of our staff to do that. The, their application as well as, I believe, this, this piece of paper that will have your vote, voted amounts on it. So if you were to change the amount, then that would be included in those records. From that requisition form, our purchasing department will create a PO. It is after that PO is created that these grantees can start to spend their, on their promotional costs. They are then asked after their program to submit invoices and receipts for any promotional costs that they would like to be reimbursed for. And they have 45 days to do so. So it's not until those funds are expended and that we receive the documentation that they'll receive the funds. So this is all on a reimbursement basis.
So just for the sake of, of just kind of, and I know you can't really put a timeframe, but maybe a timeline, rather, it's our hope that we can do this within a two-week period and is that reasonable?
It depends on the capacity of our staff to produce the minutes and then to, to create those purchasing orders. So I'm sensitive that everyone is extremely busy, but we try to do that as quickly as possible.
Right. And the only reason why I even mention that is because certainly these organizations are really relying on, on the funds in order to promote and sometimes you need that time. So I, I get there's that balance, but.
Absolutely. And it's also my hope and the hope of the advisory board that as we begin to, as we continue to rebuild this process, that that lead time is longer and longer.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that good question. Vice Chair Romero, did you have a question?
Madam Chair, Jessica, my, my question isn't so much on the, these current distributions, but the overall fund balances that we have in Lodger's Tax and also potential to, to get more revenue there. We've had all these vacation rentals around the county under the, operating under the radar. And I know we're making efforts to try to capture that. radar, and I know we're making efforts to try to capture that. And so maybe if you could comment on what we've done there and also what plan we have to use these, to utilize these funds in the future.
Sure. Thank you. So this bucket that is currently sitting at one, about just over $1 million, is one part of the lodger's tax, the full budget. And this is the bucket that we can grant from through this public granting process. From what I understand, this amount was hovering around $400,000 to $500,000 until the county started excising that lodger's tax from the short-term rentals, which is when it jumped up to about $1.2 million. So we've started to spend down on that. In terms of generating more lodger's tax, I might ask Brent if he has any thoughts on that. I can say that there is another piece of the lodger's tax that is for non-promotional items that gets run through county staff. And we've started to both generate ideas on what those expenditures could look like from the advisory board, from within staff, and again, as we rebuild this process, thinking about how we can generate more ideas to get that money back out into the community. Brent, do you have any, any comments about generating more lodger's tax? Increasing tourism?
Or collecting more from short-term rentals?
Yes.
And that's exactly what I was going to say. We just need to collect more from the short-term rentals. Mr. Jones is still working with the software company. I checked with him last week, seeing if they were ready to present a short-term rental ordinance, the draft to the commission. They weren't ready. I believe they're turning it over this week to legal counsel. So I'm not sure if we'll have anything on the 18th, but that's the biggest step is implementing and having workshops regarding the short-term rental, how tight we're going to be or how loose we're going to be. So that's the way to have additional resources. At the end of the fourth quarter, and the combined funds is $2,077,262.55, and that's where we started July 1 with. And those are again, both the promotional and non-promotional. What I have in front of me doesn't break it down.
Okay. Thank you. Chair, by me. Yes, Commissioner Veal? And thank you for that. And certainly look forward to hearing the ideas that you all have, but I have some.
I would love to hear.
We can easily spend them. I'm sure we all do. And so we look forward to what we can do, not only, you know, because I know it's lodger's tax, we understand how that works, but there's a lot that we can do that will have dual purpose, not only for those that visit, but for those that live here.
Absolutely.
So I think that's how we need to look at it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, Commissioners, any further questions or comments for our Economic Development Director? Okay, then thank you, Jessica. Thank you for being here this morning. It's exciting progress.
Chair, we need a motion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So Ms. Stern presented funding recommendations from the Taos County Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. Commissioners, what are your wishes regarding approval of the recommendations?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascherini, and thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. So the recommendations from the board pass unanimously. Please extend our thanks to the board members for their work. Thank you.
And Chair, I want to thank Val because she keeps us on track.
Absolutely. Takes a team. Absolutely. Appreciate the help always. All right, then we are moving on then to item 12 on our agenda, our County Managers' Report and Matters. Item A is update to County Commission on various items affecting Taos County. Mr. Harmio, thank you.
Thank you. Our 2023-2024 final budget was submitted last night. Ms. Veal worked from home and got it submitted last night. And so that's done, it's taken care of. So later in the week, we'll produce the budget binders, and you'll have a hard copy of the budget binder. We'll let you know when that's available or how we can get it to you. And then we'll also give you a copy of the fourth quarter report, and those numbers will translate into beginning numbers of the budgets. So everything was submitted. It was, we did a final review yesterday morning, and then Ms. Veal did get the budget submitted yesterday evening, along with the fourth quarter report as well. Do you want to thank Ms. Veal, wearing multiple hats, you know, so I want to thank her, I also want to thank Ron Sidell, who works in her office as well. And then I thank everybody for cooperating and giving Ms. Veal the space to work on it last week. And then we'll open up, back open the purchasing office for submission of requisitions. So that will open back up today. On the detox building, our attorneys have submitted to the Property Tax Division of the Department of Taxation and Revenue, the appraisal that was completed on the county's behalf. So Property Tax Division has to review that appraisal to make sure it's complete and is done correctly according to their standards. There is no Board of Finance meeting in the month of August. I'm not sure why they're not having an August meeting. So the next Board of Finance meeting is on September 19. The deadline to submit is, for the September meeting, is August 22. So that's our internal deadline that the attorneys are working on to submit the lease and everything with it. So we'll work in earnest over the, over the next week to get that submitted to the Board of Finance and work with our potential contractor on the lease. Any questions on that?
Commissioners, any questions? Not so far. Commissioner Veal?
Sorry. Couple of questions today, huh? So Brent, meanwhile, we just have to sit back. There's nothing else we can do simultaneously just to.
Nothing we could do. As you guys know, the property just came to us in the month of May, and we did the appraisal, and for whatever reason, there's not an August meeting. So it gives us enough time to work out the final contract with our potential tenant.
Okay, that's great. And so really, in essence, that is also in the works, so.
Right.
Okay, so just so that we all know really simultaneously that that is taking place as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work. I know I often kind of push, but we all do talk somewhat. Thank you.
You're welcome. So on the public works side, we are getting ready to, working with a company called GM Emulsions under a state price agreement to do a phase of Blueberry Hill Road and as well as other local roads within each of the commission districts. We're working with New Mexico Aces on putting out to bid Leo Valencia Road. Last week at the task school board, we did receive approval from the school district on the work that needs to get done on La Bora de Road. We're shifting the road, and the task school district had that easement that we needed to obtain that was voted on last week. Our engineer of record on this, Mr. Beta, is working with the SEKI Association, and then we'll put this out to bid. We don't have a timeline, but we want to get it out to bid as soon as possible.
I'll insert a road question here. Does what you said about Blueberry Hill Road, does that mean that the initial construction work is about to start happening for, at least from 64 to however much is going to be covered in the first phase?
Yes, but let's, the way you phrased it, I don't want there to be a misperception.
That's why I'm asking.
Because the way you phrased it, that's going to happen like tomorrow, but in the very near future, that will be happening.
Okay, in the very near future, so before it gets too much colder?
Right.
Okay. And about how much, how much of a stretch do we expect for Phase One? And just, I'm asking so that the public who has been asking about this and who use this road daily will have an expectation, an understanding of what's to come.
I'll defer to Jason, so I don't.
Thank you.
Miss speak.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Chair. This is going to be a minimal since it's a $12 million project, so this is going to be a quarter of the road. So this is 4.7 miles from 64 all the way up to State Road 240. So this would, as you, as you stated, it would start on the 64 side. That area, the road profile is at the widest point as it aprons out and it goes on to, as it merges on to State Road 240. So a lot of the unit values will be, would be utilized in that first component of the road. So we're only going to be looking at one point, little less than a mile, it's like almost three quarters of a mile. So unfortunately, it's not going to get us too far, but at least it's a step in the right direction. This, tomorrow, we will have MP8 RTPO meeting where I think they're going to identify the rating and rankings. We did rank first, but let's see if we do, if we will receive any additional funding for the next phase, second phase. And as noted, we're part of the congressional spending request. We made that first, second level of appropriate, we made it to appropriations from 600 applications. We went down to 300 applications. So we'll see if that level of funding would be supported, but that's 18 months out, so that's third phase, and then we'll have to secure the last one. So in general, at least this is a start in the right direction, but you know, it's not going to get us too far due to the fact. Plus, we're in the middle of the Coravis Land Track. There's a little component of the environmental study that is, still needs to be completed by a title company with the surveys. So we're restricted to that area, so we will complete that area before that area, before, that's the next stage. We're just waiting on title company. But as anybody has dealt with title companies over the last year, there's a, there's a large delay. So that's kind of been the major holdup within this project as well, other than funding. So as I think I've noticed, Commissioners, the new Commissioners here, prior to the pandemic, a mile, you'd be able to pave a mile, $1 million per mile of a roadway. And that's a roadway that you would see two 12-foot driving surfaces. Right now, after the pandemic, we're at $3 million a mile. So just letting you know, that's where the increase of this project has dramatically has just skyrocketed, and it makes it difficult for us to do this. So as, my request, and you guys probably get tired of me hearing, hearing this, but anytime you get to speak with Senator Heinrich, Senator Luhan, Representative Ledger Fernandez, please let them know that bipartisan infrastructure law doesn't support rural communities. I'm, I'll be plain honest, it's, it's kind of facade and smoke and mirrors that there's money out there, but community, I get calls from somebody every day saying that, well, there's biparts, you need to get the money. I need the match, too. So you know, any way where we can work with them and you meet up with them, I believe, I believe he was, I should have made the statement earlier, asked a request when you guys met with Heinrich or his staff on Friday. But yeah, we really need their support to move this forward. Am I wrong if they weren't at the Molly Mine? My apologies. I assumed that they were going to be at the Molly Mine. So anyways, thank you for the time, but yeah, that would be there. And this is, I'll give you a, I'll send an email to everybody of what the bid documents look like or the spec book of where we're going to be terminating the startup and then the termination of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. I appreciate, I appreciate that, that we're getting started, right? That's, that's what's important. And the weekend before this last, I was at the National Association of Counties Annual Conference, and this challenge for rural communities to actually small, you know, population, small budget, compared to other places, communities accessing some of the BIL funding, the infrastructure funding, was definitely a topic of conversation. So I think we, hopefully Washington's listening.
Commissioner Veal?
So I have a few questions, or at least one in regards to the roads within our districts, because this company that we're going to be, I guess, working with is going to be working on all of these different roads? Is that?
Not necessarily. Some of the chip seal projects, they're the only chip seal provider in the state, or at least in the northern region. The one in the southern part of the state, his numbers would be much, would be at a higher rate due to his mobilization costs. So Jim Emulsions is the only chip seal contractor, so he will be up here providing the chip seal roads. As far as state price agreement on Blueberry Hill, he has the exclusive contract for not just a million and overlay project, because you know, our local provider would be Northern Mountain, and we could probably go directly with, with them as a, as a state price agreement. Unfortunately, there are some road profile cuts and changes, and there's a head of curb that's in here. He doesn't have that certain contract to encompass that. So that's why the only provider at this point is Jim Emulsions that has that exclusive contract for.
And I guess my question behind that more so is, like, when are the, are the roads in the districts going to take place first? Are they going to take place before winter? Because I know.
I can provide, I know I told you I'd provide you a timeline of the chip seal roads, and I think he, there's an email there on Friday. I just haven't got to the email, and I'll share it with you.
Okay, just because.
But he has two different crews, so it's not that it's going to be inclusive to one. One crew is going to be all construction and overlay concrete, you know, everything that encompasses that specific scope of work for that project. A chip seal crew is a whole different element.
Okay.
And that one, like I say, we still have the optimum time. We don't start changing the temperatures first to exceed at least the minimum of sub-degree temperatures of 50 degrees would probably be somewhere on maybe mid-October.
So we have some time for that.
He mentioned that the month of August, he would restart the chip sealing on the roads in your district.
And the striping on the roads as well will be part of that?
That would be, that would be coming in. So that's a whole different contract from SABOR, I believe, would be awarded that contract.
Okay.
But that, that won't come in till these modifications to these roads are completed, because I don't want to pay too mobilization. So I'm waiting for these chip seal projects to be completed, so we can call them up here to chip seal all the roads.
Yeah, I was thinking more of the road going to Carson.
Yes.
That needs to be.
Yes. So, so I will speak with Director Fernandez, as he covers the operation, so I'll let him determine or provide a schedule, and then I'll share with you.
That would be great. That would help, so we can answer questions as people are asking.
Yeah, I'll request that for a moment. He can get a schedule to everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Silva? Okay, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anything further. Commission has any questions of me? Oh, yes, on Saturday, Chair Brush and Mayor Mastas will be reading a joint proclamation for Taos Pride Day that's going to be held the second through the third, and second through the fifth. And so we will be, the chair will be reading that at an event on Saturday. Mayor Mastas and Chair Brush both worked on the agenda, myself and Ms. Stern and Ms. Aronbeady reviewed it, reviewed the proclamation yesterday when it came over. So I stand for any questions on that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Harmio. And if anyone would like to read it, we have it, we have it here. And we're just confirming with the town that someone let the Taos Pride organizers know that we'd like to do this. So hopefully they, they are aware and will welcome us. Any questions about any of Brent's updates, Commissioners? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Harmio. Appreciate it. This takes us to item 12A, which is our Historic County Courthouse update. And it looks like we have Mr. Gilberto here instead of our, our regular Richard.
Richard's out personally to do a procedure. Gilberto's going to step on in. I know Ms. Aronbeady emailed out that KQ story, thought it was pretty good, and clarified some misperceptions that were out there. And with that said, I'll turn it over to.
And before you get started, I just want to thank Ms. Aronbeady and Mr. Sanchez for taking the time to talk with, with our Albuquerque media. Appreciate that a lot. Good morning.
Good morning. So right now, we did get the demo sub onsite yesterday. They are planning on having the demo of the front portal done in two weeks. We are salvaging the corbels and cross beams. Everything else is pretty much getting replaced on that front portal. The concrete demo will take place after that, which is the curb and the footings of the portal. That'll be done after. We are waiting for. We are waiting for info on that Saving America's Treasures grant. See if we get that, that'll give us another $750,000. And right now it's pretty much where we're at.
Thank you, Gilberto. I appreciate that. Do you, do you happen to know when we were supposed to find out or when we might expect to find out about that Saving America's Treasures grant? Cause I thought it was supposed to be this summer, but I could be way off.
I don't, we did talk to Lori yesterday too. She hasn't heard anything.
Okay.
So.
We'll keep our fingers crossed. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions about our historic county courthouse update? Vice Chair Ramaro.
As a follow-up, from last meeting, is it, is the contractor now onsite? I, I know that, that there's a question about that. And of course, to complete a project, you have to have the, to make any progress to clear a project, you have to have the contractor visibly onsite and, and working. Is that the case now?
Yes. So they did do a lot of work on the alleyway and the north side of the building. So all the utilities are in. There's just some trimming once we get the final grade and stuff for like storm drains, storm drains and all of that. But the new domestic water lines in, all the storm line is in. So that was all done. And then, yeah, they were kind of off for a little bit. And now that the demo sub is back, they're, they're back on again.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vehill.
I just have a question. I, I was just thinking about how, you know, a lot of times we hear in the community, they don't know what it's going to look like. Even though we've made every effort, you know, to, to, you know, have community meetings. I was just wondering how difficult, or if you all thought it would be helpful to put a board and photos of, of, you know, what it's going to look like and not only on the outside, but maybe the floor plan. I don't know. It's just seems to me as individuals are walking around the plaza, they might have an idea of what to cut.
Yeah, we do have the renderings that the architect has provided. It would just be getting them put on something to get them out there. But I'm sure it's something we could.
Kind of enlarge them. And, and, and you know, certainly we don't want to create any, any traffic kind of, you know, stopping to look at it. But maybe even in the center of the plaza, the area that, that people are walking around. I don't know, but we can strategically place it.
It's a great idea. Maybe with like a very brief description of what's happening and why, you know, the origin of the project, why we're doing this, you know? That, that's a nice idea if you guys all think so too.
And Richard did actually meet with Kit Carson a couple of weeks ago. So we do have a little bit more of a plan going forward for the electrical. We still aren't, we don't have a cost for that yet. But we do have a plan. We do, we're not going to have to go as far across the parking lot as we initially thought we were going to have to go. It's going to be probably a little bit less than halfway. So it's going to be a little bit easier for us. But we did meet with Kit Carson and we do have a plan going forward for that as well.
That's good news. Thank you. Any further questions about the courthouse project? Okay, then let's move on to 12C Veteran Cemetery update. And I'm assuming that this is also yours.
Yes. So right now, this first phase is pretty much done. There's a little bit of stuff left to do this week. They were going to be bringing in the last of the sod, which is around the committal shelter area. The stucco and all that there is done. So they're going to finish up the landscaping around that. Once that's done, this first phase is pretty much 100%. Just some little punchless stuff. So right now they've started with subcontract, contracts and stuff for the admin building. We're also waiting on the wager decision for that. Once we get all that stuff, they're pretty much ready to start as soon as, as soon as we can. And that will get, hopefully except if you get cement and everything in before winter.
Thank you, Gilberto. Thank you very much. Questions about the veteran cemetery project? Nope, then it, looks like you're off the hook. Thank you for stepping in today. Appreciate your time. A new one, okay.
Added, and this was indirectly thanks to Commissioner Vehill.
Item D?
So anything else on any other project, construction project that you'd like to update? For example, I know we're working on the, the contractors onsite now for that center. Anything else you want to bring up?
Yeah. So that, that would be item D, our general construction update. That's a nice add to the agenda. Thank you, thank you. So, so sorry though, you're not available quite yet.
Oh, no, it's okay. Um, so I can start kind of north, I guess, a little bit. La Cienega, that, the senior center, we're kind of at the same point where this first phase of the older grant money, we're pretty much wrapping that up. The rough bin plumbing has been done. They have a partial inspection on that. They're going to do the south side hopefully next week. Once that is done, we'll pour the slabs and foundations for that. And that's pretty much that first grant money. And then we'll be waiting for the second grant money to come in to finish. But there, we're wrapping up the first phase of that as well. The Ike Center, same thing and stuff. So I know last time I was actually up here, we talked about it and I was hoping we were going to get done a little bit sooner. We're still waiting on permit for that. That's one of our bigger holdups. Plus the lighting for the arena, that was a longer lead time we kind of expected. So right now we're hoping to get the lighting in in the next two to three weeks. I did talk to the contractor, see if, cause I know the county fair is coming up and if we could at least have that done before that. I did talk to the contractor to see if we can get conduit and wiring ran beforehand. That way when we, the lights do come in, we just got to put them in. We don't got to do the whole project at once. And that would hopefully get us to be done with that before the fair starts. So we're hoping we can get it done before the fair starts. And then the classroom stuff, we're pretty much ready to start as soon as we get a permit and stuff. That's just what we're waiting on for that.
Thank you, Gilberto. And I'm not sure if you were here earlier to hear Commissioner Vehill's October 14th deadline for kitchen.
Yeah, I, I wasn't here, but I was listening.
That's a hard deadline, right?
Yeah.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes, as long as we get the permit here pretty soon and stuff, we should be good to go. The only thing that might be pushing it kind of close would be the, the heating and cooling units and stuff. Cause that was another long lead time. But if we get those in a little bit later, but the rest of the work should be done by then.
And, and if I, I can shed a little bit of light just for those that are curious why I pushed so much on October 14th. Las Comunidades is hoping to host a matanza on that date in celebration and bringing awareness to the THC, the, the traditional historic district. And there will be some educational pieces that are going to hopefully come out of that as well as move forward into hopefully schools and whatnot. So it's, it's going to be a kickoff. And so they had asked if they could use the Ag Center Kitchen was important. Although the, the meat will be cooked in hornos and whatnot. And, but they still need the kitchen to be able to keep that food warm. So that's, that's what it's all about.
Yeah. And like I said, as we are right now, as long as we get that permit and stuff, it's, we should be good before that date.
Right.
And then we also are trying to see about adding a little bit to the scope and doing some of the grading along the south side of the building. Since the grade out there is so high, trying to see if we can get a change to that. And we can lower that grade a little bit, get some of that water away from the building as well. So we should have a number for that hopefully by the end of next week.
Really excited, Chair, if I may. Really excited to see all these changes taking place there. Certainly we have some work from our end in regards to getting that board standing, so standing up rather. And, but meanwhile, as our extension agent spoke about potentially utilizing that for, you know, some great ideas that they have, that's, that's also the other side to it.
And then just some little stuff we can have pending, haven't started quite yet. We do have two fire stations that we're working on with Red River and Costa Fire. Those will be coming up pretty soon if we can get those moving. We have done some work at both, just soil sampling and that kind of stuff. Those are coming up. Penasco Community Center is the other one that we're still working on, trying to figure out what exactly direction we're going there. You know, kind of mentioned a little bit, we have the detox coming up at another point. We have same done a little bit there. We did soil sampling on the, I guess would be the west side of the building where we're thinking about doing the addition. We started on that. We've had little discussions with Living Designs Group about doing the, the plans for that. So we're moving on that too. We do have the kitchen, I guess not renovation, the kitchen upgrade for the, what is it called? I can never remember.
For the New Mexico land.
Yes. And stuff where we have that going as well. We talked to them last week. So we're helping them with that. Like I said, it's pretty much building a whole new kitchen for them. Topa Community Center also has a grant for some energy upgrades, windows and stuff. That's another one that's coming up. Lama and San Cristo Fire getting the water storage tanks, just kind of like the other ones that we've done, the 40,000 gallon tanks. So those are two other ones that will be getting done here. I don't know if before winter, but they'll be coming up. Oh yeah, and Sero well, we've had issues with that. The contractor had a subcontractor for pulling the well, getting the well in. They haven't responded. They ended up kind of, I guess, lack of a better term, firing that contractor, that subcontractor. So now they're in the process of trying to find another contractor to pull it. But it's, it's been rough. So.
Great. I just wanted to correct myself because I said, when I was talking about the matanza, I said Las Comunidades, but it's also the La Serna Land Grant and potentially Alianza. And we're hoping to get TK1 in there also to, to video. I, I just want to make sure that I informed you on all, you know, stakeholders and all people that are contributing.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehill. Appreciate that. And I'm sure those organizations do too. Any other questions for Gilberto?
Madam Chair.
Vice Chair Ramaro.
I have one question. There've been some discussions going on regarding the paving of the Yano Camado parking lot. And maybe Commissioner Vehill knows something about it. I've heard talk about it, but I don't know if anything's happening.
And honestly, I'm kind of the same. I've heard little bits, but I'm not 100% sure on it.
Chair Brush, Vice Chair Ramaro, that group has not approached the county about it. We've heard about it, but nobody's come before us or talked to Gilberto or Richard. It would be something that Gilberto or Richard would handle. But they've, nobody's come forward to put that on our, our pretty full plate yet.
And once again, that's, you're talking about the Yano Camado, correct? Chair, if I may? Okay. Vice Chair, so what I do know about it is I did talk to Mr. Mondragon, Lippi. And so there was, I think he was going to talk to the Senator Representative in regards to potentially, you know, getting some funding. But it was just a conversation and I don't, and you're right, it has not come to the county as a request. But I think the thought is there to get that done.
And like I said, I, like I said, I've just heard a little bit about it. I think Richard actually did go and kind of measure so that way they had a rough idea of square footage of what they were going to need. And stuff, but like I said, that's pretty much as far as I know that it's gotten.
Then I thought more than anything.
Thank you. Any further questions? On our general construction projects? Then thank you once again, Gilberto, for being here. Appreciate it. Good to see you. Thank you. This takes us on to item 13, Commissioners Reports and Matters. 13A is new business to be considered at a future commission meeting. Commissioners. Miga?
Yeah, thank you. Real quick, Brent, I was going to ask you earlier, but I figured I'll ask you right away. The incident happened up in Questa, the, the victim is related to my wife. The suspect, I coached him last year. The small communities, it affects you. Penasco is just a small. May 29th, the shooting in Red River, it was a big thing for what, maybe a couple of days, then it died off. Is there any way we can get superintendents here to a meeting and ask them how we go about, or even the, from the schools? We got to educate the people. We got to educate the kids. Small communities gossip starts like crazy. After it all had happened, everybody was making different comments. And it's, you know, it affects the families. And in Questa, Penasco and Taos, everybody's pretty much related. So it create, it doesn't create a friction, but I have a feeling that you, well, you, you turn on the news in the morning, mass shooting. Hasn't hit us yet. You never think something like this would happen in a small community. But it's just, the kids are seeing everything. Parents aren't, I don't want to say not being parents, but they're being friends instead of parents anymore. And when, when I was, when I was a sheriff, I remember being on the radio station when an elderly gentleman called me and said, it takes a community to raise a child anymore, which is true. Is there any way the county can get involved with the schools and start, get with the sheriff, get with the chiefs, everything? Mayors, where we have to start educating everybody before something really bad does happen. This was bad. Something bad happens, at least we're trying to, to stop it or try and correct it before it does happen.
Chair Brush, Commissioner Ramaro, yes, I think we could call some kind of convening meeting and bring every, everybody together and, and talk about it. I know the, going back to Red River last week or week before last, I did talk to Mel Calhoun about doing a debrief on that shooting and how we could better inter-agency work. The thing with the Questa incident, that's, it's a little bit different, but we can have a convening meeting. There's also something, we're attending a community school meeting this afternoon. And there might be some kind of synergy that we can do with the community school. And I know they presented before the commission once before, but there might be some kind of, I don't want to say angle, that's not a good word, but some kind of thing where we could work and develop the community schools. And, but we, yes, we certainly can have a, a meeting with bringing in everybody.
Thank you, Brent, and thank you, Commissioner Ramaro for, because it, it is critically important to our communities, our families, our kids to, yes, prepare, but also to do what we can, play whatever role we can in preventing the next incident. And appreciate you mentioning the community schools, Brent, because the model as we, as we might remember is to take care of all of the child's needs, whether they're, you know, hungry or need clean clothes or need a mentor, things that, that make our kids feel frankly, just like more cared for. Like you said, like a, a community raising the child. So if we could, per Commissioner Ramaro's suggestion, try to convene these conversations with the goal of being, playing a role in taking care of our families, our communities. I think that'd be very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vehill?
Yes, and I think you, you nailed it. We do need to come together. Often I think as governments or even just entities, we kind of, we don't want to step on each other's toes. We try to stay in our own lanes. And really it doesn't do us any good if we don't come together and try to tackle this or approach it together to figure these things out. And so with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and go forward with my asks or future asks. So I think it, it also falls in line, certainly in a different note. But I would like for the county commissioners to consider a resolution to support Chevron, Questa Regarding Water Rights. I hope we can all agree. I, I can't imagine that we won't agree on this, that water is very important and that we need to keep all water rights in Taos. And so often, once again, we, we, we have that approach where we think, it appears sometimes that we think like, we don't want to step on toes. That's not our battle, but it really is our battle. You know, Questa is part of Taos and all those individuals and a lot of that water, whether it stays in Questa, stays in Taos. Matter of fact, we know for a fact that a lot of that water that Questa could potentially get back would go to our domestic mutual, water mutual. Am I saying that right? Water, domestic water mutual. Thank you. Associations. And so we want to make sure that we come together as a community to, to send that message that water is important to us and that we need to come together and defend it. So I will say that the invite to, to the mine and seeing what they're doing and restoring the lands was really an eye opener. So I, uh, will say that the, uh, invite to, uh, to the mine and seeing what they're doing and restoring the lands was really, um, an eye opener. But, um, I think that, uh, at the end of the day, the big takeaway for me was protecting and, and making sure that our water doesn't leave, uh, community of Taos. So just, and, um, also on another note in regards to water. Uh, we all know that, uh, there's been a lot of constituents reaching out to us in regards to Tuskegee Valley. And I know we, we try to, you know, once again, stay away, let them do what they need to do. And I'm talking about the village of Tuskegee Valley. And, um, I know there was the moratorium that, um, the constituents in, in the areas of Valdez and that, you know, the ones that are going to be mostly affected um, have been talking about it. And so I know we don't have the authority to say no more, you know, let's put a moratorium in. But we do have the ability to support a moratorium. Now, I know that, uh, the best practice is to first talk to, before we put out resolutions, to talk to these agencies. And, uh, I know, Brent, you've been trying to set something up, um, in regards to having that conversation. I just think it's important for us to remember that, um, anything that happens in Taos County, whether it be Questa, Tuskegee Valley, those are constituents and they are expecting us as leaders to step up and to protect, uh, quality, the quality of water. And so I'm just, uh, asking as commissioners to remember and to consider, uh, after we hopefully have that conversation. Uh, hopefully it'll go well and, um, and, and we can just, um, just, you know, just support the community in regards to that. So I, that's one of the things I'd like to, for us to consider.
Sure.
Yes, Mr. Harmio.
Yes, uh, so we are working with the village Tuskegee Valley. Intensively, we have a joint meeting where we're looking at, uh, August eighteenth, afternoon of August eighteenth, so.
Eighteenth or fifteenth?
Uh, fifteenth, our next county commission meet. So my logic was, uh, you guys are already off work and we'll go from here up there. Uh, and they would give us a little tour and we'd meet up at the village of Tuskegee Valley. So we're working on, on that. And so it'd be an afternoon meeting, like you said, thinking we can leave from here and go up there and.
Thank you, Brent, because as you know, like we are, it is a concern in the community and we want to be informed enough to follow up on, on these concerns. So we'd appreciate that, that, um, getting firmed up and appreciate our colleagues in the village up there hosting us for a conversation. That'd be great.
Thank you. Uh, let's see if there's anything else. That's it for future at this time? Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Um, anyone else for new business? Vice Chair Romero?
There's announcements.
Not quite yet. Okay, but yes, now, item thirteen B, Commissioners Announcements, take it away, Vice Chair.
Yes, I, I would like to announce that I have been asked to serve on the board of the Kit Carson House. And they, uh, have plans for a major project, uh, for restoration of the Kit Carson House. And, uh, it will work in concert with the recent restoration of the Cow's, uh, Sharp House down the street from the Kit Carson House. And also with, uh, the historic courthouse on the plaza and renovations on the plaza. So it's, uh, all a big effort to, uh, to restore buildings, uh, structures on the plaza and make the plaza look better. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. That's exciting. Nice to know that you're serving there too. Thank you. Um, further announcements, Commissioner V. Hill?
Uh, yes, just to let everyone know, I will be attending, uh, a New Mexico counties meeting in Carlsbad. And so I will be leaving tomorrow and headed back to Taos, uh, on the fourth in the evening. And so, uh, we'll be going over bylaws and legislative, potential legislative pieces. So I will report back when I get back.
Thank you very much, Commissioner V. Hill. Thank you for serving on that board. Um, I have one announcement, which is that the weekend before last, um, as mentioned briefly, when Mr. Silver was presenting, I was at the National Association of Counties, or NACO Annual Conference, went off to Austin to melt for a few days. Um, but the conference was, as usual, pretty fabulous. The, we heard from the Environmental Protection Agency, the Department of Defense, the Department of Transportation, the Department of Treasury, from Walmart on their employee, um, support structures, um, all kinds of sessions. I sit on the Energy, Environment and Land Use Steering Committee, so we did consider a number of resolutions that will go to the national board um, for potential, um, lobbying in DC about those resolutions. Um, some of the topics, because I would encourage everybody to be involved with NACO as much as you can, when it, when it fits, um, with your interests and schedule. We heard about various programs around energy, energy and, energy efficiency and conservation. We heard about housing, um, and solutions there. One of the interesting facts that I took away from that was that big health insurance companies are now getting involved in supporting housing construction because they see it as a healthcare issue. Um, so that, that was a pretty interesting find. Workforce development, we had a number of folks from Walmart to, um, a county near Atlanta, um, talk about what benefits and employee programs and kinds of succession planning really matter for their teams. How to like set your new hire on a career trajectory so they don't come in just for that job, but they see their path. Um, talked a lot about rural transportation issues. Um, and as I alluded to earlier, like folks are aware that the BIL doesn't necessarily work for us. Um, to that end, the Department of Transportation has put together a rural toolkit around transportation issues. Because one of the things that they pointed out to us was that we who live in rural communities spend forty-four percent more on fuel costs, you know, to get us around where we need to go than folks who live in non-rural areas. And that's, that's a bit of an inequity right there, a bit of an, an extra challenge we face here. And then finally, there was, um, an arts and culture steering committee about arts and culture as an economic driver. And one of the interesting things there, since we were in Austin, we heard from one of the founders of the South by Southwest Festival, which you might be familiar with, started back in the late eighties as a music festival. Now, like the biggest names in music, art, politics, like the president, like they all show up. It is a big part of what has turned Austin into the, might say like a bit overheated, um, location that it is. Um, but it was an extremely interesting example of what a, an arts festival, a cultural festival like that can grow into and what it can mean. Um, the, the bars and locations that were first asked back in nineteen eighty-seven to host music, didn't want to do it. But then they said, you know what, there's one really slow week we've got. It's spring break week. All the University of Texas kids leave, so we've got no business. Within, by the second or third year of the festival, they were making in that one week, two to three times what they pulled in annually. So it was a fascinating panel and it was kind of pretty cool to hear from one of the founders of South by Southwest. So that's my plug for the NACO conference. Um, I did bring back some, a variety of brochures and pamphlets on things like housing and case studies for other counties. Again, encourage you all to consider getting involved and going because you also have great conversations with our colleagues in neighboring counties and our colleagues in faraway counties and what kind of challenges and solutions we, we share. Um, it was a ton of fun, just way too hot. Okay, if there are no other, uh, Commissioners announcements, let's move on to thirteen C, Board or Committee Reports. And this one is all you, Commissioner V. Hill?
Okay, so the last Northern Rio Grande Heritage Area Board Meeting I attended was a couple of Wednesdays ago. It was the quarterly board, uh, meeting. Uh, we discussed, uh, besides budget and, um, mandating the bylaws. We also talked about the upcoming, um, uh, twenty twenty-three annual grants program. And so commissioners, I want to let you know and certainly pass this information on. Uh, they are starting their notice of grant, um, which was released on July twenty-sixth. Uh, there's a schedule here, but I'm just going to read some of the dates. So there's a, um, by, on September first through the ninth, pre-submission consultation with staff by appointment, appointment only. Uh, and so there's a number five oh five seven five three seven two seven three, in which individuals can call and, and talk to staff in regards to that application. On September fifteenth, grant application due at Northern Rio Grande, uh, National Heritage Area Office. It can be hand-delivered, emailed or postmarked by, by PM. By October sixteenth, evaluation by the Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area, Area Committee, uh, will be complete. Uh, on October twentieth, review and approved by, and by the project officer. And on October, uh, twenty-eighth, grant recommendation presented to the, uh, Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area Board for approval. And award letters go out November fifteenth and contract start dates are January first. So far, I can tell you, we've received like thirty applications. The amount is ten thousand. And, um, this is, um, in regards to, and as you, if I, I'll just give you a little reminder, the mission of the Northern Rio Grande Heritage, uh, National Heritage Areas to help sustain the community, communities' languages, cultures, traditions, heritage and environment in northern New Mexico, which is the areas of Santa Fe, Taos and, um, Ria Riva. So, um, this is the time in which these, uh, organizations out there that do some really good work can apply and hopefully, um, get some funding to just kind of move their, their programs forward. And so I would ask that you all share this with individuals within your, your, you know, uh, communities, the Penasco, Questa. And certainly, Commissioner, you and I can, will push it here in Taos and, um, in the valley area. So, uh, also, um, wanted to let you know what's been taking place in regards to a project that was funded by this year's twenty twenty-three legislative, um, legislatures, um, during the legislative, um, session. Los Luceros Property Overview, uh, what they're doing is, uh, cultural affairs, uh, by, um, embracing some goals and strategies that are shared within, uh, these Northern Rio Grande, uh, areas. And what's really, uh, really cool about this is they started an agricultural program. And, uh, they're, um, providing plots for farmers to go in and farm. And they're also, uh, giving some, or rather, um, putting out some educational resources and support so that these individuals will be successful, excuse me. Another, uh, project in, in the Los Luceros Historic Site is a culinary destination program. They have a commercial kitchen in which they will also help individuals, um, train and start their businesses. And so, um, I'm gonna, commissioners, I don't know if you have subscribed to the newsletter, but if you haven't, I would recommend you, uh, go into Northern Rio Grande, uh, National Heritage Area and get on their newsletter so you can see what's happening. But, um, there's just so much going on. The other, uh, thing that's coming forward is the, uh, twenty twenty-four project goal, which is Arts and Creators Program. And, um, this will bring in artists, demonstrations and workshops, a weaving workshop. And, um, basically, um, just having individuals come in with their art and, and showcase it. So, uh, we're also doing a film and media program, which will start up in twenty twenty-four. And, uh, the aim is to, to promote Los Luceros and establish an industry training and, and gathering site through film and medi- media initiatives. So lots going on in, in, at the Luceros, Los Luceros Historic Site. And last, wanted to remind everyone that Land Water People Time, uh, is going to be coming out soon. And, uh, Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area is a big part, plays a big part in, in putting this out or contributing to it. So that's all I've got for that particular board that I sit on, that organization.
Thank you. So I'm do, I'm going to go sign up for the newsletter. It's at rio grande nha.org.
Very good. Thank you.
And the next TCDC?
So TCDC is also doing a lot of great things and, um, that you all know they have the, they're all about food and ag. They have been hosting lots of different workshops. The latest one was, um, in regards to possibly a rancher's co-op here in Taos. And so basically ranchers, uh, did attend. It was well-attended and the conversation was around whether or not the community wants to come together and do a rancher's co-op. So, uh, there's a gentleman by the name of Dan Hobbs, who has, uh, basically been doing this for quite some time. Uh, brought his expertise, shared with the ranchers. And so there's just some convers, it started, struck up some conversation about whether or not this might be good for Taos. And so I just want to also, uh, let you know, that's one of many, many educational pieces that comes out of, uh, TCDC. Um, also, there's a pamphlet here that I'd like for you guys to take a look at when you have a chance. And it does share about the kitchen and, and the businesses that have come out of, of that, use of that, um, commercial kitchen. And so, um, lots of good stuff happening there as well. And on a final note, just the Mobile Matanza. As you all know, everyone has been patiently waiting for that to, to get to Taos, to be brought back to Taos. And so as the site, um, is being worked on, and there's, um, I think the stem.